Well, I'd like to call this meeting of the Stockbridge Planning Board to order. Thank you all for coming. We have apologies from Nancy and Wayne, who are not able to join us tonight. As usual, first item of business is to approve the minutes of the last meeting on April 19. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Well, I'll move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or comments, questions about it? Hearing none. Jennifer, would you call the roll, please?
Bill?
Yes.
Kate?
Aye.
Marie?
Aye.
Carl?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. The next is the Form A. You are...
Take your chair.
You're Russ.
I'm Russ Sackett from Sackett Survey Services.
Okay, yes, so if you could just give me a moment to share your document with you.
Sure.
I will. Okay.
Okay, we have a simple division of land here. There's two pieces here. We're dividing this larger piece here into two parcels. Parcel one, which will conform to all the requirements for a building lot, including setbacks and area, and this parcel here, which has no frontage, and is going to be combined with this parcel to make one larger lot.
And this is the property on Old Stockbridge Road?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, okay.
And these go all the way down to Lily Pond.
So both will be eligible to be lots? They both have requirements to be building lots?
Right. This one has a house on it.
Uh huh, and it will join that lot, okay.
And this parcel will just make it a larger parcel.
So the new parcel has a house on it or not?
There's a...
An existing structure?
Existing structure there, it's not a house. It's a barn or a garage or something like that.
So my understanding is that parcel two does not meet the requirements for a building lot, is that correct?
Correct. Parcel two is going to be combined with this parcel here.
So is the barn, is that one that Masalke built?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
These are both owned by...
Right, right. So, okay, so she built that barn on that property, okay, so then, wait, wait, so the, but then this is becoming a separate lot?
So this one is going to be...
So this is going to be combined with this piece. So this piece will go...
And is this all in Stockbridge? That's another kind of weird question about...
Well, actually, the frontage is in Lennox, so next week we go to the Lennox Board.
I, I'm not surprised. Okay.
So, so one concern is that this is a legal document, and her last name is spelled incorrectly on this, on this plan. It's Selke, not sleek, although she is very sleek.
Oh.
Kate, are you trying to...
That's... It should be SEL.
Should be SEL, Kate.
I don't know how that slipped through our...
And then I also understand, Jennifer, that parcel two on all the copies needs to show is not being a building lot?
That's listed here in the notes.
It's up there.
Okay, that it's not a building lot?
Yes.
Can you show me where?
Number two in the notes.
Note number two.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Okay, any questions? Any other questions or comments?
I think, I think the name...
That's got to be changed.
It's got to be changed.
And can I get your agreement on it tonight? And have you signed the revised plan with just this changed?
Yeah, if you send it up here, I can get the planning board to come in and sign it.
Okay. Thank you.
It is spelled correctly on the application.
Right, but not on the...
But not on the plan, yes.
It's spelled correctly in the notes, too. Just in the big print.
In the big...
So are you going to come and, at some point, make that non-conforming lot, that doesn't have frontage? Are you going to move it to another lot so that it does become...
It will be combined with the lot to the south, which is owned by Annie's Orchards LLC.
So, but, so you'll have another Form A or whatever to merge it?
No, because as soon as those two parcels are in the same ownership, they'll merge by the zoning merger theory.
Okay. But that lot will still say it can't be built on, right?
Well, by itself, it can't be built on.
Okay.
But once it's merged...
Once it's merged with this, it'll be a bigger lot, and well...
But it won't have frontage in Stockbridge. It has frontage at Lennox, and so that will qualify it for, well, we don't, we're not dealing with that now, so...
Right. Well, it's got enough frontage and area to conform to the requirements in Stockbridge.
Okay, so nothing is becoming more non-conforming here?
No.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No.
Any comments from the public? Then I would move that the application of Form A is not required, that we agree that it is not required.
Well, you still have to vote on it.
That's what I'm saying.
All right.
I've got, I'm asking for a motion to...
Endorse the plan as not needing approval.
Right.
Under subdivision.
Under subdivision.
As stated at the beginning of the Form A.
So why don't you just do the motion one more time, including that, include that wording?
Okay, I move that the application for determination of planning board jurisdiction and enforcement, that planning board approval under subdivision control law is not required.
Second. Do we need to say anything about, or are we going to change that name until, before we sign it?
Well, subject to changing the spelling, correcting the spelling error on the document. Is that good enough?
Good luck, Ann.
Sounds good to me.
Do we want to spell out the correct spelling? That was a joke. I don't know. Okay, this, it's been moved in seconded.
She's notorious enough.
Jennifer, can you call the roll, please?
Bill?
Yes.
Kate?
Aye.
Marie? Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
That's it.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you. I'll have a directed plan down here tomorrow.
Thank you.
The sign application has been deferred until a later meeting. So, Cara?
Which, yes.
For 44 Main Street.
Yeah, okay.
It's been deferred.
Thank you.
Cara, would you like to step up?
Yeah.
Thank you for coming to us tonight.
Do you want to see here? Yeah. And I brought large copies of the H L spreadsheet, if anyone wants it, because it's hard to read either in black and white or online, if anyone would like one. Thanks.
We saw I had the printed.
I'll do it on there.
Sure.
Can you read that? I mean, good if you can. Very tiny. Jennifer, do you need one over there? Got a bomb, so.
You okay?
Kate, yeah, we're just handing it over.
Which document should I start with, Cara?
Oh, I would go with the PowerPoint, please.
I couldn't get that to print beyond the last page. Very strange.
It's really just, just...
I got your name on the last page.
At least it's purple color.
Hold on.
All right.
Thank you for doing that.
So it's on the... So, per administrator Mike's idea of the pivot points, as far as, you know, my work with the planning board and potentially more with the select board. So I had Jennifer help me with figuring out where the ADU discussion came from in general. Because like, as you know, I came into this movie halfway through and...
It is a movie.
Had some, had definitely had some questions. So this really just flushes out the details of where the ADU discussion even came from, going back to 2000 fall of 2019 through early winter of 2019. Kate, if you go to the next slide on there, so everyone can see, perfect. The first idea was, you know, check out to see what Lennox's ADU zoning bylaw reads and, you know, how to loop in affordable housing, and the potential idea of ADUs supplying less expensive two-family dwellings, something related to it. That was November. Then you brought in, I'm not sure if it was Ned in 2019, but the building inspector discussed differences between accessory dwelling units and accessory structures. Members of the planning board were tasked with figuring out if there is really a problem that needs to be solved, and if ADUs will solve that problem, pros and cons. And then the ideas brought as their homework assignment included modifying the existing language, make sure we really need a bylaw, insert a new section on ADUs into the existing bylaw that would treat them as a smaller version of a two-family. ADUs should be by right, deleting the increase in parcel size when converting a property, and updating the size requirement while maintaining ADUs have to fit into the building code. So there were a lot of ideas back then, and most of those are still relevant. So if you go to the next slide, really the only other slide. So tonight I'm here to really figure out which direction you guys want to go as a board. So we've got amending the ADU table of use, we've got amending the bylaw itself, we've got adopting a, you know, I say in parentheses, a variation of Patrick White's Flex Parcel Zoning Initiative that we discussed a bit last time I was here, or status quo. So really, you know, what would the board like to do? Is there consensus in which direction you'd like me to ideally finalize this discussion one way?
I mean, one thing that I would like to see us do is focus on one thing, if anything. And I would also like to, I mean, make sure that everyone realizes that although it's not called an accessory dwelling unit by law, it is in our table of uses under accessory uses. So, you know, if I may, I would just pull that up and share that out, just so it's very clear to everyone that we have existing wording.
Yeah.
That's a starting point for us to understand what do we already have before we think about, you know, what, what should be changed.
I agree with you. I also think we should keep the discussion of an ADU bylaw or, or not, when we're talking about ADUs, separate from Patrick's Flex Parcel Zoning and from affordable housing. I think it's easy to, the three of those things overlap, intersect...
Oh, yeah.
And can be confusing. And I'm sure it has been for you, it has been for me. I think, I think Kate's right, let's focus on one item and get it right.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
And maybe the answer is to live with what we've got, but I'd like to dispose of ADUs one way or the other.
Right.
By the way, it's worth mentioning that the state of California, I think it was last year, made ADUs a by right provision of zoning in the entire state. No towns, no cities can override it. It's a state law now, and the whole idea is create more housing, which is in short supply, almost in every part of California.
Plug it in where you can.
Yeah. So, not that we have to follow California, a lot of things California does.
Not California. Yeah, Kate, I just slipped to that page.
Right, so, I mean, I would say that, so as you see here, under, in our table of uses, you've got 4.4, conversion of an accessory structure existing before January 1st, 1990, into one or more dwelling units provided, and then there's those four, four conditions there. So I just, you know, I think that's, that's our starting point, if you ask me. And the first thing I would recommend is that we fix the formatting here.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Yeah.
I caught that, too. I walked into Mike's office and I go...
That's an administrative thing.
About something, and then I walked into the town clerk's office, I go, I'm really confused about this.
So that's an administrative thing that does not need to go to town meeting, so I think we can start right there.
Mm-hmm. Start small, I like it.
Yeah. Have we all agreed on that?
Yeah, I think this is a very awkward format.
Yeah, well, what happened was a header, a heading just got carried over, you know, imagination thing.
Yeah.
Screwed it up, so that's what's going on. I think we can probably, Jennifer, you can probably help us out with that, right? Thank you. Oh, thank you. I can help you, too, if you want. So, yeah, so I would, that's, that's my comment. I guess I would recommend that we, we pick what's one thing to focus on and take a more systematic approach here than we have taken over the past several years. I think it's actually probably hard on you, is my guess, to, with all these different ideas and concepts, things sort of...
Learn as I go.
Floating around and so on.
So Kate, of these, in this section of uses, where are we focusing on, with respect to potentially an alternative to ADU bylaw?
Yeah, so this is page 22 of our zoning bylaw, and it's 4.4.
Right.
And I would recommend that, you know, I think the first thing is that we need to decide as a, as a board, what we want to focus in on first. Is it the ADUs? Is it Patrick's proposal? Or, you know, is it something else?
So... Well, do we agree that we should start with ADUs?
Yes.
I agree with you.
I think we can more readily dispose of that than we can the other two.
I agree.
Just to show some progress. Any objection, anybody think something else should come first?
Not at all. I mean, I mean, to me, I mean, this table just shows me, you know, that there's, you know, different standards for, you know, setbacks and frontage required for the ADUs, and I mean, I'm, I'm, I don't know, I mean, my, my mind is totally open about that, but I, I'm not sure how important those, those, that those are.
So the question is whether we even need to do anything at all, given that, that it's in our...
Right.
Are you there?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I have that question in my mind, too. So...
Cara, in, in the proposed draft of the, of the ADU bylaw, is there something in mind included there that could be beneficial for the town that is, that somehow is more either comprehensive or clearer or covers different aspects?
Would you please? To be, to be frank, since I've been looking at the table under only the principal uses and not under the accessory uses, I can't speak to comparing the ADU bylaw to the accessory uses in the use table. But as far as the bylaw itself goes, I do, I do stand by the draft that's in front of you. It was discussed with, with your building inspector, as well as one of our other community planners who deals with housing, you know, 99% of the time. Almost all of those edits are, well, format, but...
Yeah, I mean, the problem in reviewing something like this is that it seems like it's gotten intermixed with the other proposal, and, you know, that's where I found myself.
Which other proposal?
The multifamily housing.
Really?
Or is this...
This is strictly ADU bylaw.
Okay.
Yep, yep.
Okay.
Oh, I would be beyond confused if I, if I had one master document, I'd be all over the place. No, this is strictly the ADU bylaw. There's a lot, a lot of red, which is obviously deletion as well as addition, and just general relocating of a lot of, a lot of language in here.
So the track changes that you've got going here are based on, on, since we don't have this wording, we just have it in the table of uses?
Mm-hmm.
This is based on what Phil Arnold's work, or...
No, this is based on, on my work, as well as another community planner, Chris Brown, who I bounced ideas off of, as well as Ned.
Okay.
As well as a handful of other existing ADU bylaws.
One question I have is that, I took a quick look yesterday evening at Lennox's accessory dwelling unit bylaw, as well as Great Barrington. I think Lennox uses their zoning board of appeals to approve ADUs, accessory dwelling units, and Great Barrington uses a site plan review process. So I had some hesitancy about the whole, you know, California side, about the whole by right thing, because, you know, when I look at the history of Stockbridge, it wasn't necessarily like a by right approach that makes, has made Stockbridge what it is. You know, many of us feel it's a special place, right? So that's, that's one question I had, and I'm wondering if you could, so to speak, to that a little bit?
Yeah, yeah, I'll switch over, just because I think my notes for that are on the table. Let me see here. So I didn't put by right, I believe. I did put ADUs are permitted by right in R1, 2, 4, and C, and that's per the table 2A.
So, I'm sorry, which zones are...
So all, all of them.
Yeah, it's by right.
Yep, and that's per the table, where it says one family dwelling and two family dwelling units are permitted as of right to be located on a premise. So that's just the second ground, the second floor. But nothing has to be by right that, that the planning board isn't interested in having as by right. I think special permit is a, is a way to go. I think also that a site plan review process, you know, like you said, GB has, is, is somewhat popular as well.
Okay, so it might be worth, and I would be willing to do this, I know somebody on the ZBA in Lennox, as well as on the planning board in Great Barrington, it might be worth my reaching out and getting some information.
Yeah, if you'd like to, that would be great.
But, you know, we're back to the, I think we still, the decision is whether...
Yeah.
You know, Carl's point, so...
I do think that there's some value in the, in the new bylaw, the draft bylaw, that puts some meat on the bones to what we've got in the uses. I just think it's more, likely to be more helpful to applicants in terms of what the purpose of the bylaw is, what we're trying to achieve, which is nowhere in the, in the existing accessory structures part, you know, the 4.4.
Yeah, no, it's, it's just not, it's in the table of uses, that's it.
Yeah.
There's no other wording, so...
And I think that it's helpful to have more wording. This is not a straightforward issue. I, I don't disagree with whether we want, I mean, I think we do need to talk about, should this be by special permit or by right? But I, I kind of like the language of the, of the proposed bylaw, simply because it's more comprehensive, it's more descriptive, it's more useful to applicants and to us, I think, as a planning board. But I, I welcome other comments. Marie, do you have a...
No, I agree with, I agree with what you say. It's very, I would think, as an applicant, just coming in, that it would be hard to really know what, you know, you know kind of what you can't do, but I think, I think that was very good, the draft on that. I think we should keep that language.
How many accessory use bylaw applications have we seen lately?
Well, we haven't, I've never seen one, as a...
Not, not any.
I don't think we've had any. We know they're out there.
Because if we leave this as it is, we're, we're not helping the situation. And the whole idea of accessory dwelling units, as many people have explained, is to encourage additional housing, particularly for people on fixed incomes or people who want to...
I like, I like that the draft is, actually, seems to be, if I'm, if I'm checking your strikeouts correctly, seems like it's shorter.
Well, it's, it's, to me, it's just more descriptive.
Simpler, yeah, exactly.
It's more, yeah, descriptive, it's more helpful to an applicant in terms of what's necessary and how it should work, and to us.
Is this something that we need to put in front of town meeting?
Yes.
It would be.
Yes, it would be.
Is there still time for that?
Next year, no.
No, not this year.
Too late. Have to be next year.
And so Cara, one question I had was that, at our last meeting, I had asked you about under the...
Do you mind if I take my alarm off?
No, not at all.
Not bugging everyone? Sorry.
Okay, and I may have this wrong, but it looked to me, I'd asked you about the, in the table of uses, that number four, 50% of all rental units still created as affordable housing. It looked to me like, did I get that wrong, that maybe that had been removed from this draft?
It had been removed. I'm looking at it, per section 6.2.1, multifamily dwelling. Oh, no, not removed, it's just a comment there. It struck it out, but it's not, it's not actually removed.
Which page are you on?
I'm just on the, the back of, are you in the table?
Um, I'll go, I can go there.
Because I'm looking at the...
Is that where I should be looking?
I believe so.
Is there a definition for affordable?
Yeah.
There is. That is a very good question.
So let's see...
Yeah, the definition of affordable.
Oh, I need to see on the front. I don't have that, that document from you, Cara. Is it part of the, well, maybe I do.
It would be on the website under the agendas minutes.
Is it STK underscore ADU? Is it the same one I was just in, or...
It's a table, it's labeled table, I believe.
Oh, I don't, oh, wait, here it is, maybe. No, I don't have it.
That's okay, long story.
Oh, here it is, I think I found it, okay.
Long story short, it, it's really just a comment on that number four. Long story short, it, it's really just a comment on that number four.
Okay, so that.
Yep, 53, scroll.
It's just looked to me like that whole section was deleted.
Will you scroll?
One or two family dwelling existing.
I have it on mine.
Okay, but you see what I mean?
When you said it to me, it was like that.
No, that's, that's still there, I have it.
That's weird.
That's, yeah, that's weird. This is, does yours say on the top, CRF edits on Word document 5322?
It's CRF table edits on Word doc 414.
On the top of the page, so I mean.
53, yeah.
Construction. Yeah, I have different comments on mine than, than that.
All right, so we need to straighten that out if we're gonna continue.
Is that what's posted on the website?
It was what we received in our email.
Yeah, okay, okay. Well, this is, it's, it's there, to answer your question. If anyone wants to look at this, they can, and we can have Jennifer send it around.
Then we're talking about the affordable housing?
Well, we're talking about the table of uses.
Right.
There's a, for, you know, some requirements.
But that's where the reference to affordable.
Yes, yep, the 50% of rental units be created are rented as affordable housing, see definition 2.2.
You know, again, I, I'm, I'm thinking back to this question of mixing things, affordable housing, ADUs, multifamily housing. Does this need to be in here? Can it be addressed in a separate affordable? Why do we want to make ADUs 50% affordable? And, and where's the 50%? What's the magic of 50%?
I don't know, this is existing.
I know you're not.
Okay.
I wasn't asking you, I was looking at you.
I don't know that one.
Is it, is, I mean, if it's 50%, why not make it 75%? What's the logic? I don't get it.
And how do we know?
Right.
I mean, no.
Yeah, what's the, what's the?
And so, we, so 50% of the new ADU applications are affordable housing. We say yes to them, and the next person who comes along can't have an affordable housing unit.
Well, no, the intent is that 50% have to be.
So, if you need to have them, when the next guy comes in, you say, oh, it's gotta be affordable, you know, we gotta have 50%, but that doesn't make sense. I don't know why we have that.
The way that works.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think that.
So, would you want more than to be?
No, I.
No, I don't think you want to say anything about affordable housing with the ADU.
Yeah.
An ADU is just an accessory dwelling unit in a person's house or whatever. I don't think you can.
Well, I think, you know, I think that there is, there is interest in town in affordable housing.
Oh, I'm not denying it.
Yeah.
I'm just saying it doesn't belong in here.
In this particular bylaw.
I think we absolutely should have more affordable housing, and, and we, as we've talked before, we're looking to the, the new commission to guide us, but I, I don't see the logic of identifying it in here and then, nor do I see the 50%, if we do include it, as, you know.
But if you don't include it, then it's, it's not required and it doesn't happen.
Well, it, it, it can happen. It can, can it happen by virtue of, you know, if we're gonna, if we're gonna put an affordable housing bylaw in, in place, which I think is the direction where the town is headed in, why can't that cover any and all dwelling units in town?
I think that, you know, I guess that brings us back to the beginning of the conversation, or I think, you know, we should focus on one thing.
I agree. That's why I'm saying, take it out and leave it to the affordable housing process that's, that's more comprehensive and will cover all housing, or potentially could cover all housing in town, including.
And this bylaw would just regulate ADUs.
It would regulate ADUs.
ADUs, what you can do, what you can't do, and, and not talk about whether or not it's affordable until we get to the affordable bylaw.
That's the way I look at it. And I take your point, let's do one thing at a time. This is one way to do one thing at a time and not mix it up with affordable housing.
Just regulate the ADUs, what we want, what we don't want.
Yeah.
The regulations that go along with that and not mix in the affordable housing part.
What do you think, Carl?
Well, I'm still waiting to hear like what the definition of affordable housing.
Let's turn page 2.2.
If you don't mind.
I don't. I've already got it highlighted. Okay, in your bylaws, it's where requirements have been eased by the provision of affordable housing, following requirements must be met. Unless otherwise stated, a minimum of 30% of the additional residential units created, but in no case less than one unit, must be offered at rents or selling prices, not higher than specified in paragraph B below. And it goes on.
Following this.
For four more paragraphs.
I'm loving it. Aren't you glad you asked?
There's still a B and a C, so I'll let you do the math on that.
What page are?
That's page six, five and six.
Low to moderate income individuals selected from a waiting list maintained by Stockbridge Housing Authority, okay? We have that, homeownership units.
It's lengthy.
Yeah, I, it's a little, oh, I don't know, it's.
And this is tied to the state definition or?
It should be. I don't know when, when this part of the zoning bylaws was added to your.
It's, 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 it's not, it's not, it's not, it's not very transparent, I have to say. I would have a hard time, you know, I think, feel like I'd need to call a lawyer.
Yeah.
Well, so rental units must be first offered to low, moderate income individuals selected from a waiting list maintained by the Stockbridge Housing Authority.
Right.
That's pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Rents charged cannot exceed 100% of the current fair market rents for the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Well, that's, that's.
That's straightforward.
Yeah, okay.
Section 8 Rental Certificate and Voucher Program. And then next up, homeownership units, units offered for sale must be first offered to individuals, this is not really, this is for, this is sale of, sale of property.
Yeah.
So, we're talking rental units.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know, I mean, it's definitely, you know, some, some basis there, but.
So, I guess.
I don't think we have flexibility to monkey with.
Right.
The definition.
Oh, no, 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 I would, I would, I would, I mean, as long as there is one, that's okay.
Yeah.
So.
I guess.
But again, do you, do you believe it belongs in, in an ADU bylaw or it can be addressed separately when we, when the town begins to address affordable housing?
Affordable housing in general.
In general.
Hmm, I don't know, my, you know, my, my feeling about affordable housing all along has been like what we've accomplished over the years has been because people have done like, you know, construction initiatives, like, you know, Pine Woods or, or, you know, you know, Up the Hill there, and, and, you know, some of those have been, have, have been, have been quite successful. But, you know, I think it's a hard thing to legislate. I mean, you know, I mean, you know, making rules for it is good, and, but I don't think that that necessarily gets us there.
Yeah.
I, one concern I have, Phil, well, everyone, is that we have, I mean, Stockbridge is at 10.8% and the only other town above the threat, the state mandate threshold is North Adams in the Berkshires. And we've got Pine Woods and Heaton Court, and they cost something to maintain. So, my concern is, are we overextending ourselves? And, you know, depending on how it's set up, now I know that Jay and the Housing Trust are working on, as I understand it, you know, they would acquire a property that might be feasible, and then it would be overseen by construct or, you know, some organization. But, yeah, my concern is that we need to think about maintaining what we have, I feel.
Yeah, my understanding is that the, the Jay's group is looking at maybe putting a second floor on top of Pine Woods or building above rather than out, but, but I'm not, I'm not sure about that. I mean, your argument, I think, if you, if your concern is we already have enough, and it would suggest that, you know, mandating that 50% of ADUs be affordable isn't, you know, doesn't comport with that view.
No, it does because it's privately owned property. So, you know, that's, you know, I actually prefer it there because, you know, then that's, that's maintained by, by individual homeowners. So.
But it all goes to.
You know, there's no.
That quota, right?
You mean the?
The 10% rule?
I'm not sure. Cara, do you know the answer to that?
It must.
I'm not sure.
I would, I can't believe it would, would not include.
Are you sure it does?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that's what that language says.
So, I mean, it just, I, I saw this interesting statistic, I have to go back to it, and I, don't ask me what it was because I can't remember, but I was looking at statistics for, for Berkshire County towns, and the poverty level in Stockbridge kind of like struck me as being a bit high. So, you know, my concern is the needs of, of existing residents and, you know, maintaining these properties. I think there's a warrant, there's an article in the town warrant to fund maintenance of some work at Pine Woods, and I can't remember how much money, you, you must, you, what, do you remember the amount, Bill?
I don't, but it's.
I think it was like over, over, you know, upwards of $200,000.
Something like that, yeah, it's a big number.
Yeah. So, but anyway.
So, I guess the question remains, you know, do we, do we move forward on, on the table, the bylaw, you know, both? What about the flex parcel zoning? I under, I'm getting a temperature so far that that, that can kind of take a seat on the back for now.
Again, it would be great if we could, if we could come to agreement on the, on the ADU bylaw.
Right.
I think that the draft bylaw, subject to this 50% question of affordable housing, is, is frankly far preferable to the table of uses. It's more user friendly, it's more explanatory, it's more descriptive for both applicants and for us as a planning board when it comes to approving them. I think we should, we should discuss, do we want it to be by right? Do we want to propose a special permit requirement? I think that's fine, but I just, I don't think what we've got, if we really want ADUs built in this town, and I suppose there are people who might say we shouldn't, but if we really want them built, I think this is one way to encourage it. And I think they should be built, and so.
I think there's a need.
We've talked about it.
Well, and also like, you know, putting people through the process of, 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 of getting a permit, I mean, you know, feels.
Burdensome.
Right, I mean, like discouraging to.
I'd agree. And, you know, if we've had zero applicants.
Yeah.
So far, are we expecting a huge?
His house is gonna have a hole.
Right, I don't think you're gonna.
I think we could handle two a year, you know, and that's probably about where it's gonna max out.
But I think it should be a straightforward, easy process for people to understand what it is they have to do in order to do this.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, just make it so that somebody that really wants to put an ADU on their house is, is able to figure it out and what they're supposed to do and have it clear to them. I'm not sure our bylaw at the moment does that.
Right, that's sort of my point. How do we feel about that?
I like the narrative.
I do too. It's a shame Gary and, I mean, Gary and Nancy and Wayne aren't here.
Well, we have, I mean, I mean, you know, presumably, like, if this has to go to town meeting, we've got, we've got, we've got, we've got quite a lot of time to, to hash out the details, but.
It would be, it would be beneficial to kind of address this though.
But I don't know, I mean, I, I, I endorse the draft, I, 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 I agree that, I'm not, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm on the fence about like, you know, about the discussion of affordable housing because I just feel like that is, you know, another layer of complexity to add to.
Yeah.
What should be a pretty straightforward, like, you know, note on the, on the, on the, in our bylaws here.
I agree.
But, I don't know, you know, so.
I mean, okay, so, do we have consensus that we, this is what we want to focus on for now? Is that?
I think we do. Of the four of us, we're missing three of our members, which is, and our consultant.
Do you agree, Kate? I mean, it seems like.
I just, you know, I just want a more systematic approach than we have had, and.
Right.
When I looked at the material yesterday for today's meeting, it just felt like things were all over the place. And so, you know, what I would like is that we just approach things in an organized way and address one thing at a time. Otherwise, it just feels.
I completely agree.
And it looks like this.
But do we, do we, do we, do we wait till next meeting to, to, to take this up again or?
I think we're gonna have to.
Yeah.
Because we're missing three of our members.
Yeah, that's.
This is not the kind of thing I'd wanna.
Yeah.
Do without their, without more.
Fewer, more voices.
In the meantime, I can, I can look into the Lennox and Great Barrington.
Okay.
Approaches and see what I can learn there.
Okay, it'd be interesting if they have an affordable housing feature. Yes.
You know, I have not read or, or familiar about this, but there seems to be a, you know, 500 pound gorilla running around, but it should kind of go Airbnb. Are there any provisions in this to prevent people from building accessory dwelling units and turning it into a place they rent for, you know, the weekend?
There are, there is something in here, isn't there, Cara?
Bring up the hottest topic of the county. Yes, yes, and that's also, can be, it can, again, it, it will be language that the planning board would like as far as owner occupancy, you know, define what a short-term rental is, because these are like the hottest topics, and, and not even just in Berkshire County, but they, they will be addressed, absolutely.
I mean, one.
And we also have a short-term rental bylaw.
Yeah.
On the books already.
One thing I really like about our zoning bylaw table of uses is that it really, I mean, after all, they're supposed to be accessory, right? And I feel like it really spells that out pretty well. Let me see if I can find it now. It just, it says that alterations do not increase the size of the future such the existing structure by more than 20%.
Mm-hmm.
Well, we don't have the.
Greater enlargements may not be used for housing.
We would keep the table of uses and have a narrative that explains.
That comports with the bylaw.
Right.
Say that again?
We would keep the table of uses.
We keep the table of uses and amend it as necessary to.
Oh, yeah, whatever, you know, whatever the, the broad scope, the broad strokes of the bylaw.
Right.
We would refer to it in this accessory use section.
That makes sense.
You know, you see B and Bs, you see.
Yeah.
You know, it, it would be not fully fleshed out there, but as you, as you see in a lot of these, you know, C-section 6.9 or whatever it ends up changing. it ends up changing.
Thank you, Chair. Um, Kara, is there size requirements to the ADUs, like constraints or can it be any size?
Again, that's up to the planning board. So, ideas that have been bounced around are, you know, minimum requirements of, I think it was, you know, 300 feet per unit. And then, you know, as a maximum, I believe in the draft, it was 900 square feet per the structure and that's, the 900 square feet is a guideline from the state. So...
They're meant to be small.
They're meant to be accessories.
It can't be as big as, it can't be as big as a house. It's a percentage of the size.
Yeah, because there are a lot, there are a handful of communities in the county and surround areas that treat accessory dwelling units almost as expansions to their houses and end up adding 1,200 square feet to their house. And then, all of a sudden, you know, they're, where'd your lot coverage go? And, you know, a lot of things change.
Thank you.
Are there any provisions in there that somebody builds an ADU and moves into it out of their house and turns their house into an ADU?
That would be up to the planning board. I think, you know...
I don't know, I'm just asking.
Yeah.
I'm totally...
No, I think it's, there's a reference to principal residents in this bylaw that says, "The dwelling unit in which a person resides for more than one half of the year. However, if the person on the," well, blah, blah, blah. I think, I believe we can craft something that, that doesn't allow that, the kind of flip-flop, we'll move into the little one and rent the big one for a lot of money.
I, I just sense that, like, so much of this, so much of this stuff just completely flies below our radar. And, yeah, there's no enforcement here, you know, even, even if people are willing to come forward, forward to the planning board and ask permission. It's just, uh...
It just happens.
It just happens.
Dark of the night.
Yeah, I'm not actually seeing anything to John's question.
Yeah, I'm writing that one down for sure. That would be a good question.
The Airbnb thing, I think is more trackable, you know, because it's, you know, it's, 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 it's out of towners and it's, you know, it's online and so forth, but, you know, in terms of, you know, accessory dwelling, I mean, you know, it's, 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 it's a hard, it's a hard way to define.
It's a very, it's a very topic. Everything varies together.
I'm not going to go into what I'm doing in my house.
Okay, let's defer this to a future meeting. I'm also mindful, I know you came prepared to talk about three things of our agreement to talk with the CONCOM about, like, the LPOD matter and it's 7:30. Are you okay with us deferring the rest of your...
I am, yeah. This, the current requirements, all that math can be, I'm happy to push that off.
Sure.
It's, if you wanna keep them, you may, I'm, you know...
Can I have one, please, that's more legible than what I've got? Thank you.
So, did you wanna keep one? In case you can't sleep tonight or... Or for three nights? There's a lot of math out there. It's probably my fault.
This is just from our zoning bylaw, right?
It is.
Okay, so I don't really...
The current, yeah.
It's, it's current.
It's a current zoning bylaw.
It's just fleshed out math. And a lot of it is, was a little surprising to me, perhaps alone, but that's not.
Okay. Kara, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
We'll see you again.
Yes.
Do, of course.
Collect my...
Do you need anything else from us tonight?
I don't, I don't.
Okay.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you. I'd like to switch the agenda a little bit around and go to the joint meeting with the Conservation Commission.
Could I make a comment on the ADU before we change...
Sure.
Yeah, do you wanna, say, you wanna come up and tell us your name?
Sure. My name is Matt Maroney. I just registered because I was moving into my grandma's house with her this summer. She's turning 90. And so, when I started thinking about moving here, I immediately started reading the zoning code to see if there was an ADU. It was confusing. But then, ADU, that was wonderful. And, but, so I've been talking to the planning or the buildings inspector about if I could have a tiny house come on and make a pad for water and what, just trying to figure it all out and it's, it's really, it's not clear, so I just wanna thank you all for doing this because it's really, it's awesome, you know, and I, I think, I think it's great. You know, we've been thinking about the Berkshires, like, multi-generational families and my mom just retired, she would wanna move into an ADU, so this is really great and I think it's, I'm very excited about it. I'm excited to take in all this stuff.
Good, good. Well, thank you.
Thanks for your input.
Thanks. How would you like to proceed, CONCOM?
I think you should join us up here.
Yeah, you're welcome to come right up and...
The chair.
Yeah, honey, I'll give room.
I need to make them some for you, Adam.
It's so nice to make time.
There you go.
How are you?
Nice to see you.
Thank you, Kara.
Hi, Jamie.
Don, there's a chair here.
We're there.
I was looking for him. I'm here.
So, I guess the idea, I think it started with us, of, we were looking at an LPOD special permit and somebody asked, "Why is it the responsibility of the Conservation Commission?" It's, it's about water. You already deal with water in some form.
Pretty much.
And...
Or land near water.
Yeah.
And underwater.
And so, we thought, maybe it should switch. And there is a precedent for a responsibility that started with the planning board being shifted to you all. And we had a, I had a brief conversation with town council who said, "Something like this does need to go to the Attorney General's office, the office of, I think it's called Municipal Law." And, but, changes like this are not routinely given, but they, they can happen. And, and she's, she knows the person who runs that department, this is Donna Brooke, and could do a kind of formal off-the-record conversation with her about if Stockridge did, or if a client of hers did this, is it something you could, you could, would like to do? She's willing to do that. She hasn't done it yet, agreed among ourselves to make the switch. But that's the background.
My consensus, the opinion is that CONCOM doesn't have any problems with this. Right? Seems like a logical extension of what we do. If your people are all fine with it, town council can get approval of it, I think we just switch it over and start from whenever it happens. I don't know if it starts, you know, start of the year, the end of the year.
I, I, I don't know that, an estimated timeline, whether this, don't need it, I don't, I'm not sure it needs to go on the town warrant for next year.
Well, it would have to go on the next town meeting.
It would?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so we're not in any great rush.
No.
And hopefully, the state would say yes in time for it to go on.
Which comes first, the town meeting or this...
No, the town meeting.
...all saying it's okay to do and then we take...
First, Chris is voting on it, and then it goes to the Attorney General for review.
Yes, but I think what Deborah was, what Donna was telling me was, before town meeting, before you put it up for town, voted town meeting, she could do an informal, early...
Kind of figure it out.
Give me an idea of if we produce, if we come up with a plan to move this responsibility from one body to another, are you likely to approve it? And if the answer is, no, we stopped doing it, we, we don't do this anymore, then we drop it. If the answer is, you know, properly presented, we'll, we'll give it a favorable review.
I mean, I have, I do know of an instance where something was presented to me as potentially a problem, went ahead anyway. And I have heard that attorneys general are very, and courts are, are not eager to turn over decisions made at town meeting.
To overturn.
Overturn, yeah. So, I mean, it's sort of like telling them, the question is, you know, are you just better off...
I can't see where this would be run into a lot of friction at a town meeting.
No, not town meeting. Then, you know, if, I mean, we have precedent for turning a bylaw, the stormwater runoff bylaw, over to the Conservation Commission. So, do we really wanna ask them, is this okay, as opposed to just say, this is what we want? Is that question in mind?
I think Donna, Donna is of the, is, wants to inquire on our behalf, probably using no names, saying, "I have a client, a town in the, in the Commonwealth who wants to, is considering moving this responsibility from one body to the other. You know, how do you feel about this?" And if the answer is, "We don't like it," then I don't think we, we go any further or waste any time. If the answer is, "We will entertain it and we've done it before and we're doing more of it" or whatever, then I think we proceed. And you're right, once town meeting agrees, it still goes to the state.
I think Kate has a point that, you know, having, going to them, saying that the town is okay with it is possibly a step up to begin with.
I'll, I'll, I'll talk to Donna or we, we can talk jointly to Donna if you want about that.
I so agree with Kate. I think that we should get what the people would like or what's best for our town. And we have a very watery town and, you know, it would more likely, this would go to conservation.
Wishing, washing.
But, I mean, water, we have a lot of water, lots of water.
Yeah, but I think Carl makes a good point. Is this really likely in, in front of the town to be controversial?
I can't imagine. What I think is the most important thing is that I'm gathering from the Conservate, Conservation Commission members who are here, that you'd be welcome to taking on this responsibility.
We have duplicate responsibilities.
Exactly. We're doing it already.
The question is whether it's controversial at the town meeting. I don't think it is. People will be pleased. The question is whether it's actually necessary to go, for Donna to go to the Attorney's General and feel them out, as opposed to our telling them, this is what we want as a town. So, that's, that's the only point I wanted to raise.
I'm happy to have, you know, somebody else join me on the phone call.
Ask for her thoughts on how we should go about this.
Yes, I will.
What is the first step? How do we get state approval?
Do you wanna do a, do a conversation with somebody from CONCOM when you talk to Donna?
Happy to have somebody join me on the phone call.
You know, or just a three-way phone call.
Or anybody else, if you, anybody else wants to be, we can make it a conference call.
And if you, if, you know, so if you guys have questions, you can, rather than Bill say what Donna said and then you ask, you know, if you're a three-way phone call...
You're on the mark.
You do a lot of this.
Well, I think you guys have got so much on your plate.
Well, you do too, but...
With roads and bridges and zoning and all that stuff, that what we already do is to protect the water.
Yeah.
And it just seems to me that it's a duplication of effort. It's something else that you have to do that just kind of piles it on higher and deeper. And we're already, we already have to deal with that stuff anyway, so...
We're in up to our knees and already might go another inch or two.
Yeah. And if people hate us or they love us, one or the other, you know?
You know, but you often say, well, what does the CONCOM say? You know, because we feel you know a lot about, you know, when you have the regulations of what you do with water and the wetlands and things. Yeah.
And it also, I think, slows down the process for the applicant.
Yes, it's one less thing they have to do.
They say, well, who should we go to first?
Yeah, yeah.
Should we go to, they're on the lake, you know, should we go to Conservation or should we go to planning board?
Often, they're all continued.
And then, we will say what a planning board say because, let's say, they have a long driveway, which we've run into before, that runs along the river.
Sure.
You know, and you guys have certain things that you think about when you think about how long a driveway should be or where it should, where it should be. And we have other ideas about the driveway and what, how it functions in terms of what we have to protect, just as an example.
Yeah. Well, I think we're in agreement on that, the in-principle idea of shifting it to you, I think, all of them.
Well, that's, that's great.
The question is how to do it.
Right.
And how to approach the state so that we get, you know, and the town, so we get the answer.
So, you, you two are gonna touch base with, with Donna?
Well, even if we just, if you just touch base with her so she has an idea of what we want and then we can get back to her, rather than ask her questions that she says, "I got to go look up." She already knows what we're looking for.
My sense is she will know the answer to this and, and give us a clear recommendation as to what we can do, what we should be doing. I, I think she's handled this kind of thing before for others.
And you've already mentioned it to her.
And I've mentioned it to her and she thinks it should be done.
That should be enough of a heads up then, that she's got an inkling of what, especially if she knows CONCOM and...
Yeah, and she does, yeah, yeah. Okay.
Great.
Then I'll, I'll report back.
Thank you so much for coming and joining us.
That's nice of you guys.
I'm just, I'm sure, I'm sure, I'm sure all you want, all you were hoping for was another meeting, right?
Oh, boy!
We had, we actually had a number of things that we wondered about. I know that we've talked about recently because we've had two projects in front of us where the new building is 9.9% of the size of the lot, which is probably...
That's their measurements.
That's their measurements, yes. And that's, to my way of thinking, that's getting to be a huge problem. We have, we are built out around the lake, almost to the point of being way overbuilt. We are, we have deep concerns, which I have talked about ad nauseam, about the salt, about the heat, about the change of habitat, about the change of traffic patterns, about all the things that result from shoving people all into this little space. And a lot of the new buildings, if it's in the Beechwood area, for example, this is already an area that if it were under today's regulations would not have been able to be built because most of it's a wetland. And the other thing that, that this brings to mind is the idea of the septic systems. Are the septic systems considered part of the lot coverage?
We haven't been, we haven't been doing that.
No.
But should it not be? Because, because this is a disturbance of the area. It, the other thing that we've looked at is the continually rising water table, which we all see in our houses, we see water in their basements, we see, you know, flooding around the country. And it, what is now the buffer zone, we expect will someday be part of the resource area because it keeps getting wetter and wetter. So, if we're permitting people to build their septic systems in what's now the buffer zone, it's not unlikely that in the next 50 years, their septic system will be underwater, in which case it will fail, in which case it will pollute, in which case, you know, they're up the creek because they have nowhere else to put it.
Is the west...
Are you talking about the lakes, Sally? I mean... Could be the lake, could be the river, could be anything, but mostly the lake, I think, at this point.
Is the west side the only one that's not sored?
Yeah, I think so.
Just on the west side? That's the only place that's not sored and that's got that steep bank?
Yeah. And that's the... Yeah. And that's the other thing, the steep banks that, you know, we've got, the prohibition of use of fertilizers and chemicals, used to be in the Lake and Pond Overlay District, and it was taken out about 10 years ago.
But to my, you know, to clarify my question there, I mean, the lake is, the water level, there's a dam, I mean, it's, it's kind of man-made, in a way.
It kind of is.
Yeah.
But nevertheless, if you ask the people around the lake, they'll tell you that their basements are wet.
Yeah, it depends, depends where you are.
Yeah, it does. And, and if you're on a steep slope, like where your parents are, you know, that's not such an issue. But there are other places where it's a big issue. And, and, and not just the lake, but in, but in other portions of town where people want to build, and they, and they're, they're really limited by the amount of water that's in this town. I mean, we've got the river, we've got the lakes, we've got basic wetlands, we've got a lot of water that is impacting how and where people can and should build.
What about extending the sewer system?
You know, that's certainly, that's certainly an option. But with that, with that, yes, it will solve the problem of septics, but it will not solve the problem of overbuilding.
You know, you're also dealing with, with traditional septic systems, you're basically taking water, you know, you want groundwater recharge.
Yeah.
And you're, you're compromising that when you put in traditional septic systems.
I totally agree that, you know, that the construction of a septic system, a septic field, might really be considered as part of the, you know, build percentage on a lot. And, and I think I've mentioned, you know, even a meeting or two ago, like, that I thought that, you know, our, 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 you know, build-out percentages could be, could, you know, we could propose to lower them. I mean, you know, I, I don't know, we, I, over Historic Preservation Commission, we approve a tear-down of a bowl cottage about every two weeks. And, and, you know, and those, you know, sort of modest little 60s, 1950s, 1960s houses are, you know, becoming, you know, little McMansions. And, and, you know, that's not something we have any really control over, but, 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 but I think that, you know, the town could, could, could step up, could step up a bit, and like, try to.
Change the lot coverage.
Yeah, try to, exactly, just try to, try to, try to, try to keep a lid on it, you know, it's, 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 it's.
Well, that's one way, anyway.
I've had conversations about these builds-up, build-ups on non-conforming lots. You know, it's an R2 area, and it's 0.3 acres.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And, you know, it's 9.9%. The septic system's already failed, so they're going to build the new septic system on top of the old system that's failed. I mean, and you're only, God knows how far from the lake anyways. All you're doing is catching what's in the tank, and the rest of it's going in the ground, and it's going to go someplace.
Well, there's, you know, when we were, John, you know this, we talked about it at zoning review committee meetings, at that point, Ray Minares was our town council, and when I talked to Ray about the Coggiara estate bylaw, because John and Bob Jones were doing a deep dive on that, Ray told me, he said, you know, when he was brought on board in Stockbridge, which was about $89.90, right? He said, he had warned town officials that there were two problematic bylaws. One was the Lake and Pond Overlay District bylaw, and the other was the Coggiara State bylaw. So, you know, this is what, this has come to pass, and the Lake and Pond Overlay District bylaw requi, you know, relies on special permits. And, you know, as part of that, I think it would be very helpful if you guys take that bylaw over, to get some clarification from town council, on what your, your jurisdiction is there, because my understanding's always been, with special permits, that boards have enormous discretionary input. It's not that you want to prevent people from doing something, but you can negotiate a better deal for, you know, the neighboring area, or, you know, the.
We do that. We, we negotiate, we negotiate whenever we can. We try and make improvements on the property, if it's one that we really hate. But there's, I mean, there's a limit under the.
Yeah.
There's a limit under the Wetlands Protection Act, as to what we can, what we can actually do. We have, I won't say push the limits, but we have come pretty close to pushing the limits of what we can require of an applicant, because we're really concerned about the size of the, of the house that's going on, a really teeny-tiny lot, and the, and the septic system. And just as an example, and I don't want to pick on this particular project, but the 8 Hawthorne Road is going, a big, big house. It's probably going to be fine when it's done, they've got it all tucked in in the bank and everything, but they may be doing some blasting. They're removing a whole ton of trees, like 60-some-odd trees. This is a big change to that lot. And they're having, they're building the septic on top of the other septic on that one? Yeah. So, we just built our new house, and which we have the perk right system in the new house. And my understanding is that that can be significantly smaller than a lot of other septic systems, and it works differently. But when we built it, you have to not only have your septic field, but you have to have a reserve septic field, in case it fails. It's, the perk right is presumably never going to fail, that's what it's advertised to be. But, but if you're not using that, you know, do you have to have the backup reserve septic system? And if you have no room, you have no room.
Why do these lots not have to have that? And you did, and my daughter built a house, and she had to have two, not in Stockbridge.
I don't know.
But why are they not required?
I don't know the answer to that.
Can't we change things to require it?
They, they get a tri-town approval, and it's, it's fine to go.
So it's Board of Health, or?
I don't know, I guess.
Or.
In a way, it's Board of Health, tri-town.
Shouldn't they be as interested in this topic as you are?
Oh, yeah. But, I mean, of course, the other thing is that, that the, in this case, this, this particular property, and in many of the properties, there's already a house there. There's already a septic system there. So this is really grandfathered, whether we like it or not. And in the rebuilding, they have to have a septic system, you know, they, because otherwise, what, then what? So, and if there's not town water, Kate, Kate brought up earlier, what's something that's concerned me for a long time, is that when you have town sewer, you're taking the water out of one place, and you're moving it across town. So the recharge that happens when you have a septic system in your backyard, doesn't happen. And the other thing that's, that they talk about a lot with, with septic systems around water courses, is the, is the fact that the, even though the stuff has been cleaned, and even though it's going through this, this system, which presumably makes it non-toxic, it is still, nevertheless, prime fertilizer. And this prime fertilizer coming out of this, this, it might be drinkable, but it's, if it's going in the lake, it is causing weed growth, for sure. So it's, it's a tough one, all the way around.
So here's, you know, I'll just read you out from the bylaw, the LPOD bylaw, Lake and Pond Overlay District, under Erosion and Sedimentation Control, natural vegetation shall be maintained on at least 75% of the total area within the Lake and Pond Overlay District. So, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of, in this bylaw, that can, my feeling is that a lot can be accomplished with it.
I think the Lake and Pond Overlay District was brilliant. It was.
It's clear.
Beautifully written. It's very comprehensive. And, and if you can use it to its best use, I think it's, I think it's a great resource.
If, if we extend town sewer, wouldn't we require that septic tanks be shut down?
I don't think you can require it. I think you can offer it.
We can't require.
But if you're.
If you're building a new.
New, yeah, or if your septic fails, then you have to, right?
Then I think.
But if it's going, and it's good, I don't think you can require that they hook up to it.
You know, one other thing that you guys might want to think about is having, I've talked to planners about the, the LPOD, you might want to think about having an as-built bylaw, to make sure that, and not, oh, also, we're currently not requiring a site planned on by a licensed land surveyor or landscape architect?
We do, if we have an NOI.
We do not.
We do.
I'm just saying, as part of the LPOD, we do not.
Yeah.
And a lot of the plans we get are unstamped.
Well, you know, one of the things that I've been pushing for, and Lisa graciously put it into our sequence of work, what we have to deal with, so we can, the applicant's a little bit informed before they walk into the room, is a sequence of work that involves, okay, you come to us with your plan, and you put the plan on the table, and we go to a site visit, and then they come back, and at the site visit, we say, well, you might change this, that, or the other thing. However, you know, I've seen over and over again, plans that have been put on the table in 2002, that don't get started until 2019. And the contractor has no idea of what we've put into.
They can't do that, actually. They can't do that. They have three out, three years.
Well, nevertheless, I've seen this down in Beechwood, you know, where, where there have been things that were not approved by us, right on the bank of the lake. And, you know, all I can think of is the contractor wasn't informed about this, well, and what we put before them. And so I'm pushing for, you know, the contractor to sign off on each one of the pages, in, you know, our order of conditions, so that we know that he knows, and also, they understand that we are allowed onto the property until the property project is over and done with, then we will show up.
Are you, are you still working on the?
Performance.
Performance.
Right.
They're, they're completed.
They're ready?
They're ready.
They're coming to?
They're not yet.
Are they coming to town meeting, or?
They're going to the lawyer for final review. I don't think it goes to town meeting, we can write our own.
You just write your own, yeah, okay.
Some of the things that we see, we're not sure that you have seen.
Correct.
The exact same thing.
Right.
Okay, they, we say, has this been to the planning board? Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Or, well, right after you approve it, we're going to take it to the planning board, that type of thing.
Oh, yeah.
We don't know what you're seeing, and you don't know what we've seen. So, you know, even if we sign it, doesn't necessarily mean that you get the exact same thing that we had.
Right.
I had someone change it, remember? Someone told me, oh, the CONCOM, so-and-so on the CONCOM thinks this is great.
Yeah. That was, yeah, someone was me. I resent that. But anyway, another project that has come before you and us is 20 Mackinac Shores. And speaking of 10% of property, this is a tiny lot, absolutely tiny, and, you know, I guess square footage of the house has nothing to do with the 10%, because what they have done is they have the first floor, and then they have a second floor, and then they have this extension sticking out the side of the second floor.
Cantilever, cantilever.
It's cantilever, so, you know, I get, you know, I guess.
It's not over 35 feet, and it's not on the ground.
Right.
Right.
And so, you know, these little squirrely things that we deal with, they're like, you get out in there, check on it, see if, you know, diversion control stuff is in place, and so forth, and so on, and look at this and say, I wonder if the planning board knows about that?
Yeah, I don't think.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Aiming the system.
That was the one that did the.
Exactly.
The land. Was not what was on the permit, and the neighbors saw that.
The ratio of the combined floor areas, all buildings or structures on a lot to the area of the lot on which they are located shall not exceed 20%. So there's worrying for that, too, actually.
No.
Floor area shall not include uninhabitable basement utilities space, but shall include porches and deck space.
This was just humorous. I mean, you look at it, and you're like, what do they have in mind? And I like Dave Linu. On something else, can I throw something into the Bailey Wick here, just out of curiosity? I've been, a, a friend of mine has been giving me a, a list of, you know, all these huge pieces of property around town, and, and concern about tang wood, if tang wood ever went bust, and what would happen to that property, et cetera, et cetera. And capalo, and so forth, and so on, and how the developers are just sitting there waiting to pounce on them. And, you know, the town created a thing called the Scenic Mountain Act. And looking at the likes of Orlikon Farm, and the likes of Gary Johnston's farm, I mean, we have some pretty beautiful vistas in this town. And I'm wondering if there might be some way to initiate a plan to protect scenic vistas in our town.
Well, scenic mountain, isn't that, isn't that under the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission?
It, it is, but I just thought that maybe we could all get on the same page.
To expand, expand the, the.
Jurisdiction of that? I, I don't know if it would be, in my view, I think it would be a separate thing.
I see.
I mean.
There are also some issues that are tied to that, which, John, you've brought up a number of times, which is the reflective nature of windows.
Roots.
And Kate's talked about the bird strikes and things like that a number of times. These are all things, the color of the house, I mean, all you have to do is stand on the east side of the lake, and look across the lake, and you can see all these nice little houses that are sort of brown, or green, or, you know, something that blends into the, that blends into the scenic part of the lake. And then you get down to the southern part of the lake, on the other side of the island, and there's white, white, white! And it's huge, and it's like, it's jarring, and it's really, you know, people complain. And unfortunately, none of these projects has come before us.
And it's used as a precedent, I might add.
Oh, yeah.
Because, say, oh, well, look at that place down there, and then we sort of sit there and go, oh, look at there.
Well, years ago, we had talked to town council about including in the scenic mountains color choices. And we weren't going to say, no, you have to paint it brown, or you have to paint it this color, or you have to, this is the Pantone color that you can only use on your house. It was earth, earth colors, you know, something that would blend into the surrounding area. We never told them anything, but then town council told us that that was extending beyond our jurisdiction in, in scenic mountains. But my, I still have, I went back and forth and pray, I don't know how many times, on this, because my feeling was that there is definitely, and I don't have it with me, there's definitely a, a visual component to, an aesthetic component to the Scenic Mountain Act. And it seemed to me that it said that we had that right, but Ray said no.
I don't think that should be allowed to put anything right in a 25 mile light bulb.
It's still there, but he wouldn't let us, he wouldn't let us regulate the colors.
Sally, I was looking at your, in preparation for today, I was looking at the, your bylaw that you work with, and the general bylaws, and I'm kind of curious to get your input. It looked to me like there, it actually takes into consideration aesthetics.
The what?
Aesthetics.
Oh, yes, it does. It's, my way of thinking, it absolutely says we have that, we have that.
So how far do you, I mean.
Ray said no.
He said no?
Did he say why he said no?
He said he didn't think it would pass a court challenge.
Because, because, is that because the CONCOM is tied to the Wetlands Protection Act, or, because you have your own bylaw, so?
Yeah, I know. He said no. But, but that, to me, is something that we should be looking at down the way. We should be looking at lot sizes, we should be looking at, particularly in areas, the Zutonic and the, and the bowl, all have areas that have very steep slopes on the, on the banks.
Lily Pond.
Lily Pond, yeah. And all of that, and that makes, all makes a difference in terms of what happens when you build something up on the, on the shoreline, how steep the slope is.
I mean, I think that, you know, communication is really important. I was at a dinner a month or so ago, and there were, there were a couple, lake residents who've been here for decades, and, older couple, and the lake came up, and I. And, uh, the lake came up and I, you know, brought up stormwater, the issues of stormwater runoff and so on. And the gentleman said, why am I hearing this term for the first time?
I, I mean, I've written a couple of articles that have appeared in the Bowel Association newsletter, so it's not like this can be news to anybody.
It's also the terrific storms we're having now too, the amounts of water coming.
So we, um, do you want to take any comments from the, from the Zoom audience?
Sure. Who do we have?
Um, let's see.
Can we see them?
Bill Luttrell sent a comment. Let's see if I can.
Of course he does.
Okay, Bill Luttrell, he says twenty Mackinac Shores Road, the oversized house mentioned earlier, um.
Could I, could I speak to it?
Yeah.
Hi, I just, you know, our experience with the, uh, with the, we put on some videos so you can see my face, uh, with the whole process with twenty Mackinac Shores Road, which is our butter immediately to the south, was that there were, all through the process, there were problems with what they had proposed to build and what they ultimately set out to do. We, the net result was they, they completely terraced the entire lot. I mean, there's no original dirt or rock or anything left on that lot. They brought in these huge boulders, they stuck them into the water, you know, a good two or three feet further offshore because they used a datum from the last time the lake level had been lowered and they had a datum for like the shoreline in November. So, and then, you know, they've built this massive, massive house that I'm sure is going to be okay, but it's completely out of scale with the neighborhood. And despite the fact we as a buttered asked for like some drawings that would show how that related to the neighboring houses, that never happened. But the, the bottom line was, particularly with the boulders and the lake, there was no one, it got deferred to the guy from the state, uh, DEP, who basically said, you know, well, it was close enough to what the plans they'd submitted to the Concom that he wasn't going to intervene. I, it just, it felt like there was nobody that had the power to step in and say, early on, stop before you, you know, made so many changes to this property that you can't go back. You know, it's a done deal and we have to live next to the guy and I, I understand that. But, you know, that, that's my concern is sort of whether LPOD ends up still with the planning board or with the Concom, you know, where, where are the teeth? You know, how do you, how do you go back and say, you know, you just, some of these things you just can't do. So that's, that's my concern. And thank you all for the hard work you do. I gotta say, I've, I've been to a number of meetings. I really appreciate it. Thanks.
We, we learned a lot from this project, Bill. Really, really a lot we learned. Yep.
Understatement.
Thank you.
Oh, it's part of the reason.
Are there any other comments from the public? Questions?
Enforcement is tough.
We have enforcement provisions in our zoning bylaw, so, you know, take a look at those.
And aren't you thinking about hiring somebody to kind of check on things like this?
Looking for an agent.
We're looking for an agent.
And what would that agent do?
He would monitor the progress of these, well, that's the original thought, was he'd monitor the project, projects as they progressed. That from the people that we've talked to so far and who have an interest in helping us out would be extremely expensive. So I think we have to pick and choose which project we want them to keep an eye on. We tell them, okay, can you come back a month from now and look at this project again? Or if we get, as John's looking for, a schedule of events, when they say, this is the date that we're going to start this, we ask them, check on that when they start it.
Did they?
Check on it. The night after they've started it and make sure that things haven't changed.
BNRC might be a good resource in terms of, you know, talking to them about people that are interested.
We were trying to do like a tri-town agent.
Yeah.
And we couldn't, that wasn't flying.
Yeah, so there's, the finding capability here is three hundred dollars a day.
You know, one thing that I, I just got to put on the table because when twenty Mackinac Shores came on, I have this habit of driving around Stockbridge Bowl at the end of the day, the end of my workday and so forth. And when they started doing work, like I think the third day or so, they started work on twenty, um, Mackinac Shores, I went to the site and they had dumped these huge boulders into the lake and there was half an excavator sitting on the boulders and the other half was sitting on the shore. And I just went ballistic. I, I just couldn't believe what I was seeing, let alone was it dripping diesel, was it dripping grease? What was, I mean, it was just totally absurd. I made a big stink out of it because the guy was there. And he pulled it out and pulled it to the top of the lot. But I mean, this is, you know, this is stuff that's got to be kept from happening.
Yeah. And I don't know how often you drive around looking for stuff.
Yeah.
But I don't do it every day.
We've talked about it and maybe assigning, um, kind of monitoring of projects we've approved amongst ourselves to, you know, Marie goes and looks at X address and with a checklist of what we approved to see if, if it's as best we can.
I know Jamie and I have talked about it, Lisa too, probably, is that, you know, for us, if you walk onto a construction site, you're a bunch of guys in hard hats and they're big and burly and cranky. It's a little unnerving to go on.
I mean, I don't know if you really have to walk. Just kind of look and see if they're doing, you know, if they're cutting down more trees than they.
They have tools.
I mean, I don't think you necessarily walk on the property.
To that, George Shippey came up with a good idea when he was chair of the Concom and that was, he had badges made for us with our photograph and it said Stockbridge Conservation Commission.
I've still got one that's on a lantern, yeah.
And, you know, I've still got, no, I don't, I think mine just disintegrated, but, um, I, I don't think that's a bad thing.
No, it is, it's a good thing, but it still doesn't, it still doesn't.
No, I get it.
Eliminate the creep factor when you go onto a construction site.
Definitely.
Hey, honey.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
All right, so that's a few things. I don't know, we've got anything else?
Anything else, Sally? What else you got?
Um, well, I think I talked about my, my, top of my hit list.
Well, you've been wonderful. You've been wonderful to come join us and it's really, it's really, um, I don't know, it's, 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 it's nice. We, we, we've got a good group here, but, uh, you know, it's, 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 it's good to know we have company.
You got company.
Do this once a year.
Yeah.
Yes, at least.
The lion's done.
We can.
I don't think it's open.
Might not get much done, but.
We could use, we could go to the porch instead. It's a little quieter.
Yeah, it was fun. We posted it and everything, you know?
Thanks for coming.
Thank you. Yeah, I thank you, thank you for doing this. I, I think this is critical and I think, I think that we are all seeing the same issues and we are, the time has come where we really need to address them before we go any further because it's just getting too, too hard to manage.
Pretty soon there's not, it's not going back.
And there's going to be nothing, nothing really left to manage.
We've, we've noticed that when we show up at a site visit and there's counsel there, legal, something's not right.
But it's also that there are two lawyers for that last. Notification there, right?
They can do that.
You got one, we got the other.
I mean, there's reasons they go to these things.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we're very careful what we say. We shake our heads, yeah, we see. You know, you can't say, well, yes, no, not anything there. Uh, we'll discuss it later. We'll look at your plans, we'll do. But if they're sending legal counsel along with the engineers, the architects and whoever else, they're looking to get, get by with something that, that's shaky at the least.
Like the ninety-nine point nine percent.
And that's their measurements.
Right, yeah.
I mean, I do think that requiring a stamped site plan, requiring a stamped site plan by a licensed.
Yeah.
Oh, anytime, anytime we have a.
Reluctant to do some of the stuff that I've seen.
Anytime we have a notice of intent, it's required. They have a stamped plan.
It's not required for the LPOD.
Right, but it is, but it is, but if they're doing something, most likely, not guaranteed, but if they're doing something in the LPOD, the odds are they are filing an NOI. Not always, but for the most part. And, and again, you know, I've been on the Conservation Commission for I don't know how long now, it's been a really long time. And, and, and half the things that we do is because we've got bitten in the butt by somebody who did something and we went, are you kidding me? And, and, you know, um, but the, but the stamped plans, we were much more loosey-goosey for a long time about letting them, letting people around the resource areas file an RDA, a request for determination of applicability, which is a lot less cumbersome for the applicant, which is nice for the applicant. But there's, there are a lot of projects that we've gotten that have, we, we really need to condition and you really can't condition it with an RDA. So we've made them go back and, and file a, a notice of intent, which does require stamped signed plans.
One thing to that, and that is, is that there is among the, the sort of non-engineers out there who come before us with a stamped plan. I mean, there are engineers out there that just say, hey, Mitch, can you stamp this for me? You know, I don't know how that does, that really doesn't fly with me very well. I mean, I guess it's within bounds of the law, but, you know, it's like, you're going to come in with a stamped plan, it'd be nice to see the guy who stamped it.
Same with some site visits. We had one Christian Hill, not a stake on the ground.
And we asked them to do it.
Yeah. You know, the nice set of drawings, but.
Right, how do you, yeah, it's a.
Hard to visualize.
And we've gotten, we've gotten crazier and crazier about trees.
Oh, the trees.
Because we have had a couple of projects recently where the trees have just gone, because, oh, they were only little trees, we just took them out.
We considered it brush. Was less than four inches, it might have been twenty feet tall, but it was less than four inches.
I heard that one at the Eight Hawthorne. I heard one of the, the team refer to the, all that brushy stuff.
Well, the canopy does have to do with the groundwater and, you know, people don't really understand that.
Right.
You take a hundred-foot white pine and you replace it with a twenty-foot maple tree.
They don't put in a twenty-foot.
Yeah, two ten-footers.
Yeah.
Yeah, that canopy is important.
Anyway.
We're good.
Instructive evening.
Thanks very much.
Yeah.
Good to see you.
Good luck.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you for being willing to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take on the LPOD business.
I'm okay. I don't know, hanging in there, I don't know.
Let me see what time.
Yeah, I'm busy.
You take fifteen.
Not making any money.
But I saw that look in your eyes. I knew what you were going to say.
Look in my eyes. I see you go out the window. All right, so I make a motion that we adjourn?
Yes. There's seconds. Second. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you.
Now, I talked my, uh.